Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We're going to start the meeting and we will. There is an item here that will be going into executive session that people should know about. But I suspect that the bulk of the folks in the audience want to be part of the communication and public comment. So it being 6:33, I'm calling the meeting of the Windham Northeast Supervisor Union Board Order. It again, we're meeting at the at the library at the Bellis Falls Union High School. And item two, as is always the case, is our introductions because not everyone knows who we are. And because we have an online audience. So why don't we start to my furthest left? Left, you're on.
All right, Windham Park is representing Bellis Falls Union High School in the Rockingham.
You're up next.
Jason Terry, I'm on the Bellis Falls Union High School Board. Want to be noted that I am not a voting member on this board. I just had so much fun last night. I thought it'd be interesting to come tonight as well.
You are. Mr. McCollum?
Jim McCollum, I'm on the Rockingham School Board.
Jim?
Team BLC, I'm on the Westminster School Board.
I'm Jack Brier. I am for at least another few weeks, a chair of this board. And I'm from Grafton.
Andy Haas, Superintendent of Schools?
Molly Vannick, Bellis Falls Union High School Chair, representing Westminster.
Wayne Morgan, I'm from Amherst. Priscilla Lambert, Rockingham Chair. So I'm representing Rockingham and I'm clerk of this board.
All right. And we have at least, and people may correct me if I'm wrong, we have at least three people remote that are all members of our board. Karen, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yes. Okay, I'm Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
And Hardy?
Hardy Merrill, WNUESD, Grafton, Vermont.
Indeed. And Chris Kibbe?
Chris Kibbe, Rockingham School Board and Treasurer of the WNESU.
Now, if there's anyone else, because there's a lot of names on the screen and sometimes stuff runs over the screen. Are there any members of this board that are patched remotely that I haven't recognized? All right, then then we're going to move on to adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments, was there any suggested adjustments? We can do that now. I see a hand up. Yes.
The minutes for January 4 were not approved last time. We're supposed to postpone until tonight and January 18. However, I do not believe we have those at this point. So we are, we need those. So I would ask that maybe Mr. Hoss could get those.
Let's note for the record that they were missing and that
That's why I brought it up.
Thank you. And that they must be brought up at the next meeting because it is no longer January.
Right.
So that noted and presumably communicated. Let's move on to communications and public comment. I see a number of folks here that I'm assuming want to communicate or comment. Before we start that, and and it may be a little, if people feel more comfortable taking chairs so I can actually see folks, that'd be nice. But you can also sit where you are. People that are online, there's that little hand signal thing on your on your Zoom that you can use to let us know. And if we seem to be ignoring you completely, just speak up and say hi. And that way we'll make sure that we do recognize you. Just before, however, we do that, my, my last member of the board has shown up. Do you want to, do you want to totally introduce yourself?
Yeah, apologies for being late. Cheryl Charles, Westminster.
Very good. We're on to communications and public comment. Just one more thing. The rules that wrote on communication and public comment aren't always understood, but I want to summarize them. We can hear you out. What we cannot do is change the agenda to accommodate a question or a request that would go on to the following, following agenda. And usually board chairs are pretty accommodating. I mean, if we meet in February, I'll be that board chair. If we meet in March, we're going to have someone else do that. But that's the protocol. And we also would caution members of our boards that we don't get into lengthy discussions with commentators or question them or cross examine them. That's not the deal here. This is your time to speak and to be heard. But understand how it works. You talk to us. If there's items that need to be included on the agenda in our next meeting, we'll do that. But that's how, but that's how it is. I know sometimes these things break into lengthy conversations. And I just want to caution everybody that that's not how this works. So do we have anyone in the room that would like to speak? If you do, I'd ask you to stand and introduce yourself. And then we'll do this, we'll ask the people online to do the same. So is there anyone here that would like to speak to, to your school board? Okay, um. Then we'll, we'll continue on this a little later. The reason I'm saying this is because the, the number five on our agenda is an item I suspect a lot of you are interested in. I would prefer that you speak now because we'll be going into executive session. And I think that's an easier process. As much as I want to have an open meeting. That's the process that is the one established by Roberts. So if you have anything to say about what we're dealing with now, I really prefer you speaking now. Do I see nobody? Oh, I do. Okay, excellent. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind again, standing and introducing yourself. And if you come a little closer, this magic owl thing will pick up your voice a lot better than it will if you're way off in the corner there.
Yes, I'll be the icebreaker. My name is Amanda Damaris.
Hi, Amanda.
I work for the school system. I also have a child in the middle school and I have a child that is a junior here in the high school. I don't want people to lose their chance to actually speak. So I figure I better break the ice. But just so that people who were not present at last night's meeting can know, I did speak up saying that I think we should definitely reconsider the resignation of John Brody as a principal. He's a great member of the community. He knows our children. And I would much rather have a principal that knows our children and has had a history with our community than to risk getting rid of him and not knowing what we're going to come have coming in as a principal. Or if we will even have a successful principal search, considering we still have a middle school that doesn't have a principal. I feel that in this time right now, post COVID, it's still very difficult to find people to fill jobs. And I think it would be very unwise to get rid of someone whose heart is in here with our students. And take that chance of not having anybody. Sorry, I didn't have anything formal. So I'm just kind of winging it here. But that's my input. I don't know. I don't know the formalities of it and stuff. I am one that will say if anything illegal was happening, then I totally understand. If it's just an aspect of needing some more support or some more training or something, let's work with what we've got. Let's not toss someone else out. We've had so much turnover. These kids really do need someone that's consistent. I have a child that has gone through with Mr. Brody. And last night when I saw him, he said, oh yeah, I like him. He was actually a cool dude. My kid does not like anyone with authority. I have a junior here. She's afraid that if we lose Mr. Brody, we might lose our arts department, our music and theater, because he has been very active in all of that as well. I know that there's many kids that would be very sad to see him go. And I know that there's many parents that are concerned about our kids losing someone else that they actually have connections with. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking. Just to put some order to this, I'm going to ask if there's anybody on the that's called in tonight, to signal if they would wish to speak. And then if not, we'll switch back to anyone else in the room. And we'll do it in that order. I hope that's acceptable to everyone. Do we have anyone online that has their hand up? I don't see any hands. All right. And if there's anybody online that would just like to talk, yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a letter that was sent to all of us, but then I was called out to ask to read it.
All right.
This came from a, from a Rockingham resident, a teacher in his school, Holly Falsel. And she says, I am a taxpayer in the WNESU district and I am concerned with not only the additional staff that has been hired the past few years at central office, but the salary for the superintendent as well, a salary of $151,000 plus the extra $5,000 a year is too much for this district to pay in addition to the raise that he asked for. We can't afford that. People are struggling to make ends meet. You, in parentheses, work for the people who elected you, not for the superintendent. You need to consider what it says to the taxpayers if you continue to spend unneeded funds like this. We can't afford him. That was sent to all of the school board members.
All right. Is there anyone on this? You said there's no one to treat. Is there anyone in the audience here tonight that would like to speak? No, don't be shy.
So I'm sure there's a lot of people here that don't know me. My name is Sean Gailey. And I am the step parent to one of my fiance's kids in elementary system. And there's, there's been numerous concerns that have been brought to our attention with our kids and with others. A bullying being a very big thing in the school system. Under my understanding, schools are, you know, a no bullying policy and it's your job to enforce that. So I guess where I stand with that is when enforcement isn't being done and it keeps going on, what, what do our children do at that point? You know, they're, they're coming home with different attitudes and taking it out on us. And there's only so much that we can do. We can go to the school, go to the principal, go to their teachers and express our concerns, but it stops there. Second, with the whole salary increase, why? There's numerous teachers in this school system who work their butts off that barely make ends meet themselves. And work countless hours, not only at school, but at home, preparing studies, preparing tests, stuff like that. And you know, they don't really get the credit they deserve and they're, they're just like any of us. So why is one person making six figures want more and more? And what has he done to show for it? You know, the school needs a new roof. And during the COVID relief, there was a grant given to them that was put into a $2 million bond for the taxpayers to come up with to pay for that roof. Why, why should the taxpayers have to pay stuff of that nature when the government has already given them money? I mean, I, I guess the, the overall point I'm trying to make is if people want more money, then the parents of the students and the students should also receive more. And the problems that are currently at hand should be more of a priority than giving somebody a higher salary rate. You know, we have bigger problems that we need to look at before we go giving people more money. And that's kind of what I came here to say tonight.
Sean, just, just for the record, because these are public meetings. I don't want, I don't want anybody to misspell your name when we take this note. So would you mind just spelling it Sean? Is it S E or S H?
S H A W N.
And Daly?
Gailey, G A I L E Y.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
So is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I don't have anyone online. All right.
Are you going to them first?
I, I, we see that. I see Jeremy Haskins and then we'll get to you next. Just I want to do this right. Jeremy, this board is yours.
Can you hear me all right? Sorry, I'm out of town. Just a few concerning things involving over the last year and a half and how administration has been ran and the breakdowns and levels of training for different levels of administrations in different schools. Support to the, to the principals, system principals and different levels. It's just disappointing to see that a person that's taken this position and is the, is the leader of the supervisor union and has been basically eliminated the assistant superintendent's position, rolled the salary in, saying they could handle that position. And then come around and hire some other employees to pick up some of the work slack that they can't handle and feel that they, they need to come to the board for more money. It just makes no sense. I think we got to get back to the root of things and support for our community and some pure support to our schools, to the teachers and focus on what we've got. And put that, put the money where we need to focus it. We've, we've on a family issue have dealt with multiple problems within the school district at the middle school. And we still have a lot of things unsolved and still working through that. And lack of supports on different fronts, lack of communications and still waiting for some communications. So just wanted to put that out there that I don't know how someone can get an increase and not be performing at the, the level they should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Jeremy, you're, that's H A S K I N S, correct?
Correct.
All right. And you're from which community?
Rockingham Bellis Falls.
Okay, just again, for the record, thank you. Now back to the in-person segment of the room here.
I'm Samantha Simons.
Samantha, you'd stand a little closer to the gizmo because then they can hear you.
I'm Samantha Simons. I have a junior in the high school here. I served on the Rockingham Board a few years ago, for a few years. And I apologize. I feel like I've been out of the loop for a few years on the politics and the ins and outs of what's been happening in this school. But this has certainly brought my attention back to what's important and trying to get involved. I'm a firm believer, you can't complain about what's going on unless you're going to be a part of trying to be the solution. And so not knowing all the ins and outs, and I don't know the realities and the, the process of things, but my question is, is what was the hiring process for Mr. Haas? What was that process to get to the point where I know he was interim? When did that turn into a full contract in his position? And how did we come to the terms of that contract? The, the mass amount of money, it's almost double like what I'm hearing other superintendents across our state are getting. You know, I agree with Mrs. Falsel that I don't see how we can support that when you're hearing about students that are have broken desks and there's no tissues in the classroom, then we can't supply certain things to our students. I just don't understand how we can justify that. So I'm not expecting an answer, I guess, right now unless somebody wants to tell me or tell, I think everybody's kind of wondering this, what that process was. The hiring process to get him on full, you know, as contracted with us as our superintendent, not just interim. And what did he bring to the table to justify such a mass amount of salary? I mean, maybe he's valued at that. Maybe he's worth that. But I think that as a taxpayer also, I think we all deserve to know what's being brought to the table for that amount of money and what he's providing for services to us and to our students. And the next step, a little off topic about this, is moving to Mr. Brody's. I don't know the process that like, who determined when contracts are being offered or if they're being offered to teachers, administration? How does that work? Because I'd be interested to know if it was intended to have a contract offered to Mr. Brody before he submitted his letter? Was that the intent? If it is, I feel like we could save a ton of time and energy and money by let's revisiting that and possibly offering him a contract instead of spending all the time and energy on searching for a new principal. And if there were issues, I agree with Amanda. If there were legal issues, something he did wrong, absolutely, we need to accept that. But if not, and there are certain administrative issues that can be supported or worked with, I think we need to revisit that. So I don't know who's like actually responsible for, okay, we're deciding to renew this contract with this principal or we're not going to offer it. So I don't know if I get those answers now or I just asked the questions. So.
Thank you.
Do I get the answers now or do I?
As I say, two, two items. The hiring and hiring of a principal at the Bellis Falls Union High School is a Bellis Falls Union High School Board issue. This board is an assemblage of multiple districts. And what we might say, you know, we give advice or not to that Bellis Falls Union High School Board. That's not our purview. Just you, I, you, I want just you to understand.
No, I, then that's what I don't understand. It's like, I thought that is my understanding, the supervisory union or their superintendent was the one that would offer those contracts. So that's what made me associated with this SU board.
As I say, I'm, I'm breaking my own rule about not engaging in conversation here. So you'll forgive me on that. But I would, I would say that's an issue raised with that board when they next meet. And I suspect there'll be more on that agenda, but I don't know because I'm not the chair of that board.
Then how do we all get answers on the process of Mr. Haas's, you know?
Mr. Haskins?
Mr. Haas. His higher, that higher process, his contract, how it came to be agreed upon with his contract or value that he brought to the table. Like, how do we get those answers? I feel like even at the meeting yesterday, we got to ask lots of questions, but you leave with no answers. So when do we get those answers?
Coming here. Some personnel issues are confidential and have to be out of respect to everyone. It may be that this board will ask the chair to write a summary of how we got there and how we didn't. But I can't speak for the board and I'm not necessarily volunteering for that job of that, but that's, I don't know. That'll be part of the discussion we have. I suspect part of it being executive session. But that is an issue that perhaps will get addressed. And it may be a side we put on the, that we'll put on the agenda for a following meeting. Again, that's at the discretion of the body.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else online? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone else in the room? Well then, thank you for your thoughtful comments. Our item next up is old unfinished business for discussion action. And, and there is anticipated to be an executive session because it's a contract matter. And I'll be looking in a moment for a motion to go into executive session. And that's a kind of in-house meeting. I do want to say just for the public record, one thing that I think is important, because I know there was some social media correspondence that had a significant error and I just, I think it generated some of this. When we made the hire of the current superintendent, Dave Park and I did a review of base salaries for superintendents of small to mid-sized schools in the state of Vermont. Now, we're, it was, it was a little out of date. But at that time, the average salary for superintendent schools for districts of about 1,000 people ranged from about 146 to 157. That doesn't mean that this board has, has to or doesn't have to pay that much. But I do want people to understand there was a, there was a figure of $70,000 thrown around and an implication that we're giving the superintendent the $80,000 raise. That is, that's not a thing. And I just, I do, I just want, I'm always stating this is not, we're not engaging in debate about whether the superintendent's doing a good job. That's an in-house discussion. It's not a discussion about what salary we want to offer him. That's an in-house discussion. But I did want that piece of misinformation to be corrected publicly here in general before we go into our, before we have a sort of a discussion. If this is a debate on that point, I won't entertain the discussion. If it's simply a comment more broad based, then that's fine. I, I put that on social media. That number came off ZipRecruiter and that was the average salary. I had, again, not having a debate tonight. But we, I will be happy to put, I'll be happy to put that, that schedule in the public record and have it be attached to the notes tonight for anyone that has curiosity about that. All right.
I just have a very fine question. Does that, does that include experience as well?
I'm simply giving you the data that I have, but there is no one that's paid $70,000 to superintendent schools in the state of Vermont, state of New Hampshire, state of Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, centrally nowhere in the eastern seaboard. I just, I look. So with that noted, I would, yes, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Before you do, I'm not understanding why we would go into executive session. Because it's, it's, but the whole, the contract, his contract is public knowledge because of his last contract. So it's not.
We're not discussing his last contract. We're discussing whether or not there should be any amendments to it, whether there should be whether he wants to do it. It is a contract matter.
But it's not.
Every contract, including teacher contracts, and that we've ever done, including the last two superintendents, we have done an executive session. And I, unless, if you would wish to vote no and go into executive session, I'll respect that. But I'm, right now, I'm asking this board to vote on whether we go into executive session. Yes.
I'll take that motion.
Thank you. Looking for a second. I got a second. Without further ado.
Discussion.
You can have, we can have discussion.
Okay, um, the teacher's contract was actually in open session when we were negotiating it and doing that until we got to mediation. I think that people should have knowledge of what is being recommended. And I don't think it has to do with, with performance of an individual. So that's why I feel that it could certainly be done in open session.
I would.
Thank you for listening.
That's fine. I would just state the record that when friends of ours like Holly, Falsel or Amanda were, they, they're, their contract of the, of the, of the the, the contract that the union did with us is a public contract. The hiring, the hiring decision and the, and the discussion around that was private and rightfully so. And that's, and it's based on that. This is, this is not a union contract. This is a discussion with a person about where they fit on their compensation schedule and where the, and, and whether or not they be continued, if it really came down to that. And that is a contract matter, under the definition. We could suspend that if board, as a majority, decided we wanted to do this in public. But I'm, with that said, is there any other discussion on this matter?
Can the public have discussion on this matter?
With all great respect, this is a decision of the board to go into executive session. And I, you know, we, I, I.
I think having discussion on you guys having this executive session could the public be part of that discussion that was just opened up?
Generally, it's my view that we do not do that. Because I'm happy, if there's a question, if there's a technical question about what is a proper executive session, then I'm certainly open to hearing a challenge to that. But this falls. Then I'm certainly open to hearing a challenge to that, but this falls, in the opinion of this chair, falls very much in, in the parameter of what executive sessions are designed for. It's not, we don't, you know, we do not discuss contracts in a contract negotiation, because it's a negotiation in open session.
Um, teachers' negotiations.
We do not, if, if you, if you came and wanted to be hired by us.
This isn't a hiring.
Well, if, if you want to renegotiate your personal contract, we would not have that discussion in open session.
I understand that.
Pardon?
I, I think you're gonna take the vote.
I, 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 I'm going to, with all due respect, go into a vote, because the, I've heard one comment, and I'm not, and no others from board members. I'm gonna ask for the roll call, starting with Cheryl Charles on my left.
Yes.
Yes.
Support motion.
Uh, and her, her next door neighbor.
Yes.
Uh, you're not a voting member, uh, you are, Jakes?
Yes.
Jean?
Yeah.
Molly?
Yes.
Priscilla, I'm staying. Uh, we've got, uh, Hardy?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Kibby?
Yes.
And who am I missing? Karen?
Yes.
All right, the eyes have it, and we are now in executive session. When the executive session concludes, we will take a vote if it be, and we can have public, we can have further comment from board members and discussion that's appropriate uh, for open session to take place. Uh, so that probably, I'm, I'm assuming forty, forty-five minutes, maybe I'm being pessimistic, but I think that's about what we land on. And uh, I would, if those people would like to either go out and get something to eat or come back, be more than uh, uh, willing to hear you all out. Well, hi, everybody. Uh, it is uh, twenty-two. And we're back in exec, we're back out of executive session, so much for that forty-five minutes. Uh, thank you all for hanging in with us while we, uh, while we took the horse and beat it for a while. Um, I'm anticipating a motion from a, a member of the board, would that member of the board like to make that motion?
Right, I'd be, I'd be pleased to do so. Let me say, there's a point of information quickly for the public, the superintendent has an agreement in place through June of twenty twenty-five. The motion that I would make at this time is that there has been no discussion of any salary increase for the superintendent, and that this board is working on clarifying language in one section having to do with goals for performance. And that we as a board are strongly in support of Mr. Haas as superintendent. That's the motion I would put on the floor for a vote in affirmation by the current board.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, well, I'm gonna give that to Jakes, uh, just for the record. Um, is there any further discussion on this matter uh, by members of the board? Hearing none, we're going to proceed to a roll call vote, and I'm gonna start with the folks who are uh, still with us remotely, starting with Chris Kibby. I or nay on the motion as written, uh, as spoken here?
Aye.
All right, how about you, uh, Hardy?
Aye.
All right, Karen had to leave us, so we're going to uh, do a roundtable, and, and we'll start with Priscilla.
Aye.
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 So we have unanimous, uh, unanimous agreement on that motion. Uh, the next order of business is everybody's favorite director's comments, so we'll start on the other side and start with you, Cheryl.
All right, um, I'm, I'm reading, uh, one of our board members, Karen Blanchard, is actually on holiday in Hawaii, but uh, was with us remotely for this meeting, and she said, would you share? Um. That Andy, Andy Haas, in her view, has and continues to do an incredible job with a great deal of responsibility and integrity. She personally is concerned by gossip that maligns a person's integrity, uh, particularly based on incorrect information. That's her comment. I'd like to add as a director's comment, how much I thank the people who came to the meeting last night at the high school. How respectful, uh, so much of the discourse was, how genuine people were in their comments of concern. And I'd like to particularly thank, um, the chair of last night's meeting, Molly, or her skillful, uh, managing with that meeting. And again, my thanks to everyone here tonight and those who are listening, uh, for your participation. It really matters that we get involved in those things that affect our children, our community, and so this is a very important part of the civics process, so thank you.
Uh, one, you start with us next, Brenda?
I just want to thank you for your comments and for your support of this school and board. And I wanna just say that, um, I expect to see people working together to come to and end and make a choice.
Um, would we do director's comments? These, I, I've always invited non-voting members to comment, so why don't you take a shot?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted to make sure that everyone, uh, gets out and votes. Um, we typically have a few hundred people that vote on budgets, and, you know, we have a very uh, big responsibility as, as taxpayers to, uh, make sure we know what we're voting for, and um, as part of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board. You know, we have a, a lot of issues as far as what we should and should not spend money on, and what we are, um, what, what's the quality that we're going to provide for the future generations? Thank you.
Uh, no comments. Ian?
Uh, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I hope that we can be as a board as transparent as possible with the public, so if you feel like we are not doing so, to please let us know. Um, I think it's great when people come out for their concerns and also for things that they appreciate that are going on in schools as well, so, thank you.
I think it is very important that chairs of this board, chairs of any of the district boards understand their responsibility to be as transparent with the public as possible. I've always did, I'm used to at the end of every meeting, state that my phone number is area code eight oh two, eight four three, two seven three five. And that my email contact is jackfryer@wnesu.com. Many of you used to use that on a fairly regular basis. I would encourage you for this month to do that. I would encourage the chairs of other boards to similarly state for the record how you can make them be contacted, and encourage members who have questions to do that. One of the things, when we don't do that, is crazy stuff gets out in the community. Uh, e- emails get circulated, assertions that are necessarily factual get, get out in the public domain. It's the job of the chair to know about them and to address them. And I've done that with a few of the comments that I've gotten over the last day or two. Uh, I'm hoping that my, my district chairs and those now and those in the future would take that as a prime responsibility to you, the community.
I think everybody knows how to get ahold of me, but if you don't, we all have a W N E S U email. I mean, as soon as you get a board member, they.
They're not working. They get kicked back.
If you use the form on the W N E S U site, it gets kicked back. I informed Mr. Haas of that on December fifth, and it still hasn't been resolved as of today. The public is not able to access that portal to access any of you.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't aware. Uh, the email that Holly Falsel sent, I actually received twice. Because she sent it to everyone, which I received it, and she did say it got kicked back, but then she sent it just to me and I got it also. So I'm not sure, but IT will certainly look to that, because I was not aware of that. Um, I, I do appreciate everyone coming out. Um, even last night was a, was a good night. It was you know, it's, it's really good to hear from the public. There's a lot of times, you know, we can't say some things that people probably wish we would, but there's you know, you all know with your teachers or anything that you, you know, we all employ people, you have to be careful what you say about people. It's not, you know, a lot of that is, is not public information, but um, I'm glad to see that people still have a heartbeat sometimes, you know, sometimes we come in here and we, you know, we still have these nights where we don't get out of here till nine o'clock and and um, there's something going on most of the time that we're, we're trying to, to make the best effort we can to create the best working environment for the kids and the staff and and, you know, for the high school, you know, we're really looking forward to making some cosmetic changes and things to make things look more um, up to date. And we are, we do have a couple of bonds on the articles we voted on, it's town meeting day for a new roof for the high school, well, it's not really a new roof, but it's gonna be basically a new roof and, and to, to put a new driveway in, not to change the driveway, but to change the drainage and get it tarred again. Those are things that we're, we're just throwing out to the voters to see how they feel about that. Um, you know, we're, we're just gonna try to see what we can get done. Thank you.
Lynn, you're up next.
Um, I'm ready. Thank you that everybody came out and voiced their thoughts. It really helps us to know what's, what people are thinking about so often. I feel like they're not hearing anything from the community and not quite knowing where to go, so thank you.
Priscilla, you're next.
Yes, um. I just appreciate everybody that, that's here. I know we have different thoughts sometimes. And sometimes it takes some conversation. It means that we also need to listen carefully to each person and not cut off any conversation that someone is trying to give, because if we're listening carefully, we may learn something, and we may find out how they're thinking and be able to help them in understanding how we're thinking. It is such a responsibility for each board member to be here and for each board member to help provide the best educational programs that we can for the students in all of our districts. And it's also like our, my other, our board members have said, it's important to hear from the public. Because if we hear from the public, then we know what you're thinking as well. Because we are here to represent you, and we are here to bring forward your ideas, not just. So that's really a very important thing, and I appreciate every one of you. I appreciate our district, I appreciate administration, our staff, and our students who we have to care for so deeply, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, yes, I, I see, before we get to the two people's pictures I see, just want to note for the record, Kathy Ciano is a member of the, uh, board in Grafton. Uh, I don't know if you were in the, uh, discussion tonight or not, Kathy, if you want to say anything, feel free. Surprise.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to move on and ask Hardy if he'd like to comment.
As Jack gets ready to move on into the sunset, I would like to thank him for running a very good meeting tonight. It was actually quite civil for the majority of, especially the executive session. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Can I add my phone number?
Uh, you know, we'll break, we'll break the protocol, go for it.
Um, you asked us to give our phone numbers. My phone number is in the book, it's under David Lambert, and it's eight oh two, four six three, two two seven one. And I can be reached at priscilla.lambert@wnesu.com.
Thank you. Uh, last but certainly not least is our former superintendent from days gone by, Chris Kibby, what say you?
I'm going to say the least. Uh, I, I have, good night off.
That was brief. My goodness, uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion, uh, to, for date of time of next meeting, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty, unless there is an objection. And with that, I bet, uh, there might be somebody that wants to adjourn. Ooh, if we have a motion to adjourn, do we have any objections?
None.
Without objection, uh, we'll see you all on fifteen.